Okay, we are recording.
All right. Okay, so it is May 5th and it is 6:00 PM and I will open up this council work session. Tonight, we are going to be meeting with the directors and they're going to be presenting their budgets and their projects. So I will do a quick roll call just for the record and then we will move on. So I will begin with Carl DeYoung, Councilman DeYoung.
Present.
Councilman Brendan McGoffin.
Present.
Councilman Glenn Allen.
Present.
Councilman Kevin Loy.
Here.
Councilman Chuck Owen.
Here.
Councilwoman Sarah Diamond.
Present.
And Councilwoman Joellen Casti.
Present.
Okay, thank you, everyone, and thank you staff for being here and I will pretty much go in the order that I do when we do roll call during council meetings. So I will begin with Fire Chief Frank Wagner.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity. Just wanted to start off with, we've had some very great successes in this last year, even with the pandemic. We were able to promote three new lieutenants from our ranks. So congratulations, I think we've already brought up Troy Hanson, Aaron Bontrager and Michael Mahia, who are in the ranks now out on their own through the Training Officers Program and on a 12-day rotation, you'll see them on the streets. We are also in the middle of planning our 100-year centennial celebration for the department, which will come up on May 21st here at the department and it's growing each and every day. I got confirmation today that Lifelight is going to come in and do a flyby in commemoration and honoring Chief Cleaner in his 40 years. We're going to have the Honor Guard come up from Boeing Fire and the Tuck Willa area and do a flag presentation and the full Honor Guard flag ceremony and passing of the helmet. We are hopefully going to have some refreshments and stuff there. We've got all the balloons and whistles and and stuff that goes with it to celebrate deservedly so, all the years of service we've gotten from Chief Cleaner and thanking him for where he's leaving us in our future and our ability to talk about the things we're talking about tonight. So to move on, in the last kind of a state of address of where we've been, where we are and where we're going. In the last few years, as you know, we've had the ALS transition, so we've had the ability to bring on eight full-time paramedic firefighters that we really had no budget or plan to do so in that time, but have been a great success. We were able to bring on some amazing folks that have really strengthened our team and built the partnerships with our volunteer ranks and and the community and and they're showing how vested and vital they are and and really allowed us to enhance our deployment strategy, providing EMS services and transports not only to our citizens here in Cedar Woolley, but you'll see our ambulances in, I think today they were up heading towards concrete and they've been as far as New Haylen and up to the top of the pass at times and and headed down to Conway and all the way up to Waukam County, so toward Alger. So a great program that we started and and it seems to be growing each and every day, but with that comes volume. Over the last five or six years, we went from running a little over 2,000 calls to now we're at 3,429 calls to end 2020. Transports, you know, back in the 2015 era, we were just kind of dabbling in the BLS transports and doing, you know, five here and 10 there a month and and I think we, our big year before this all started was breaking the 200 barrier for the year. And now, the last couple of years, we've been well over 1,000 and ending this last year with a 1,550 transports, so kudos to all of our paramedics and staff of volunteers and residents that we rely on each and every day. This last year, we also finally received the funding and the product from the Assistance to Firefighters Grant that you folks allowed us to be a part of. That was the one where we paid the 10% match and got $270,000 worth of SCBA's that we received and put into service here in January. So much appreciated to you folks for that. The crews appreciate those and and we have to replace those every 10 years or and it's a very large financial investment, but much needed. Also with the pandemic, we came across a lot of struggles with PPE and not only the cost, but even the ability to get it at times. We were able to partner with our local fire agencies and municipalities and Skagit County EMS and DM to come up with a cooperative purchasing, which helped us get through the hard times. Now we're back to being able to get a lot of those things, just we're paying a lot higher cost than we ever had before, as we've talked about before. Another celebration that we had this last year was the addition of ProQA software for the dispatch center, which will eventually allow us to send the right resource to the right calls as our partnering agencies around the county develop their BLS program like we already have in place. But right now, we're getting a lot better information than we ever had before. Where if you're listening to the scanners or looking at the Skagit breaking, you used to see, you know, we'd get an aid call or a med call. Well, now we're actually getting the information of, you know, is it a cardiac? Well, why is it a cardiac? Is there hypertension involved? So the the folks on their way in can kind of plan on what they're going to arrive to and what kind of resources they may need to ask to add or what kind of medications or stuff they they need to take in with them when they get to the call. So it's a a great resource to have and and it took us a while to get there because there's a lot of backdoor stuff that goes with it, but kudos to all the folks that helped with that throughout the county and Mayor Johnson for being on that board that that helped drive that process. This next year, we're currently, I say the next year, but where we're at now and in the near future, we're replacing two Assistant Chiefs, my position that's currently vacant, as well as Chief Olson, who will be retiring at the end of June. We are finishing up that process and hoping to do a job offer at the end of this week. And as long as that goes smoothly, we'll have that person in position by the middle of June to allow him to work with Chief Olson through the end of June to kind of pass the torch and all of the processes and stuff that we already have in place that have been working so well for us. Also, in the next year or two, we're going to be having to do some recruiting, some trainings and developing, not only of our people, but of these two new folks, so depending on the job offers that are accepted, we'll have to look at, you know, do they need some different certification? Do we need some leadership training? And we want to take care of those folks and get them the right resources and tools for that development to to build the team and the future and be able to mentor those below them. And with the growing popularity of our resident volunteer program, we're continuing to see folks get those career positions down at South County and some of these larger departments that are having a huge wave of retirements and stuff that are coming through, as well as increases in budgets with these rural fire authorities that are allowing them to to add folks and and we've become their, one of their pipelines because the the great folks that we're developing here in-house with kudos to those paramedic firefighters and and our volunteer lieutenants and captains that are assisting in that process. If you've been up to Station Two, we've started to break ground. Another shout out to Nathan and his crew that are allowing that to happen. The storage building that the Fire Department and Police were looking at putting across the street here on Murdoch. Last year, we we had to kind of pull the reins in on that because of the increased construction costs that Councilmember DeYoung was talking about prior to the meeting. It got so expensive, our 200, $250,000 building there over there was going to cost us 1.3 million and it just wasn't feasible. So we're looking at another option and with the help of Nathan and his team, that's already breaking ground and and hopefully by the end of the year, we'll have something to to put things in under dry weather and and plug in our air trailer that we got a couple of years ago to some three-phase power and utilize that without having to roll it out in the rain and start up the diesel generator. At the end of this year, we will be accepting the ambulance that we purchased through E and R and R last year. It's a 300-day process from from order to delivery with the volume that they're doing down there at Braun Northwest. And our E and R and R schedule also calls for two more ambulances coming in the next 18 months, so we'll be doing specs on those and hopefully get those out for delivery of the end of 2022. The last couple of things I have is Fire District Eight, we have a contract with them to provide services for the area around the city from west of our city limits to Burlington and east of our city limits up toward Minkler Road, as well as our partnership that we have where we share the cost of our part-time staffing during the day Monday through Friday. And that contract we extended for this year and and we'll need to revisit that here before it comes up at the end of this year to move on. That's that's all I have. If there's any questions from Councilor staff.
I've got a question. How many, how many full-time people do you have and how many volunteers do you have?
Currently, Councilman Loy, we have eight full-time paramedic firefighters. Three administration staff would be the two Assistant Chiefs that we're attempting to fill at this time, and my position is chief. And we have 37 volunteers on the roster right now. Some of those, actually 11 of those are also residents that live at our stations. So five of them are right now at Station One, six up at Station Two. And then we also currently have 15 folks that are part-time and most of those are also either residents or volunteers as well, so.
What what's the minimum amount of volunteers you need? Where where's your critical line at?
The the critical line? I I would say anything under 25 would be critical in how we rely on these folks. Perfect world, I would like to have 50. But it's getting harder and harder to recruit those folks and and rely on them with the amount of call volume we have and the training restrictions that we put on these folks.
Thank you.
You betcha, sir.
Councilman DeYoung.
Yeah, thanks. Chief, I just want to follow up and get some further information. You talked about training and leadership and also in your response to Councilmember Loy about training restrictions. So what we hear from time to time from our law enforcement folks about what academies they can participate in and those get maxed out and we're not able to participate in a timely fashion. I would presume that's also happening with the volunteers in the Fire Department. So what are some of those challenges and how can they be addressed? Thank you.
That is a huge challenge that we're all having within this county and this region. Years ago, we used to have a Skagit County Recruit Academy that had enough folks in participation where we would run two academies a year. There'd be 15 to 20 folks in that, in those academies that we would turn out firefighter one certified people to back to their departments at a pretty minimal rate. It it just got to be where it was hard to get the instructors to commit to that many hours because most of those academies were seven to 11 weeks or more. And now we're we're really relying heavily upon the college, doing a lot of recruiting from, they have the Fight Program over there that works with the Northwest Technical Career Academy that I'm also a board member of. And when they graduate from high school, they have all the skills and the the know-how and the everything but the certifications, because most of them aren't old enough to even test yet. So after they graduate from high school, then they're going on to the testing to get certified or they're moving into the fire services AA degree over there, the two-year program at the college. So we're relying pretty heavily on grabbing those folks because they're they're chomping at the bit, they're they're willing, they're able, they are looking for a place to get the experiences so they can move on to those career departments like what we've talked about earlier with being that pipeline. And we get them in here as a resident and they can continue to go on to school while we utilize those skills that they've developed and give them the the experiences that they need. So we would like, with the Skagit County Fire Chiefs Association has been talking every month and the biggest topic that they come up with is how do we get back on board of of doing one of those recruit academies? How do we invest the time, the resources and get the folks to do it as much as it benefits all of us? But we we've been doing a lot of in-house stuff when we get these folks from within the community that are willing to be residents, doing a lot of our training here. We have a nice training site down here on Third Street, but again, it takes a lot of time and and energy and and the last few folks that we've sent to academies, we've gone, sent down to either Cedar Dale Conway when they were having one up to Waukam or one of our paramedics here in-house, Skylar Anderson. He was willing to do a full-on academy for some of our folks and some of District Eights as well here in the last year. And that that worked out really well, but again, a lot of time and energy and and worth the investment, but we got to find the right people and get those people recruited to be willing to put that time in for us.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else for Chief Wagner?
Chief Wagner, Councilman Allen. Very informative. Is was, is Paul your brother?
Never met the guy. No, yeah, he is.
Okay, he worked. He worked really hard at training, long hours and everything else. You know, on training people. I I guess on the lighter side now, you've been so serious because what you have to give us is tough information. When Chief Cleaner does retire, are we going to have fireworks and everything for him?
I think the helicopter is going to be our fireworks. Hopefully. We don't, we don't want to put candles on the cake for every year because we'd have to have a burn permit.
Okay, so in an effort to keep us moving forward, thank you, Chief Wagner. Very informative information. Very good. Thank you. We will move on to now Police Chief Lynn Tucker and I also believe that Lieutenant Dan McElwray is going to be presenting, correct?
Yes. All right. Thank you, Mayor. So Dan and I are going to tag-team this quick presentation. So I'm going to start off with, you all have a couple of handouts from me and a packet for tonight. I'm not going to go over those again and reiterate. I'm thinking most of you know how to read. I'm not sure about Chuck, but I'm thinking he might know how to read. You know, being the kind of guy he is, but just going to leave a lot of that up to you all to take a look at, read. It has, I guess, kind of what the mayor was asking for to present to you all. But really, what we wanted to talk about tonight and actually get your feedback or any questions was staffing has been our big, I guess, function goal for the last year and a half. Besides all the other exciting things that have been happening in the world. But staffing has been our our main thing. We went from just the bare minimum to getting a lot of more people, essentially nine or 10 new people on board in the last year. So, but a lot of changes have happened in the world. We've seen the Black Lives Matter. We've seen protests. We've seen changes across the board. And this week on Thursday, the next two Thursdays, we're going to be getting presentations from the State Chiefs and Sheriff's Association on the legislative actions that were taken and how that's going to affect us. So we following up with you on those at later city council meetings. Now, Dan's going to talk here a little bit about staffing and some of the things that we're looking forward to in the in the future, in the near future and what we've been experiencing. Then I'm going to back clean up with just a la, a few last things that we're going to be seeing in the future and we'll be welcoming any questions. So Dan, take it away.
Good evening, Council. Thank you for having us. So it's hard to believe that we've hired 10 officers since 2019. And, you know, some of that was from Prop One and others were just filling vacancies, that retirements and such. Yeah, I know you hear that a lot from us. We, you know, a lot of hiring and stuff, but just in in perspective, we have one officer in the academy. We have one officer that starts on Monday. We still have one vacant position that we're looking to hire for. So we're in that process. And we have, you know, one that's on deployment. So just kind of perspective, we're we're still really four officers down. You know, looking at it that way, they're not on the road, they're not helping us. So, you know, it just kind of putting that in perspective, it's 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 hard to realize when we're saying every council meeting and stuff, hey, we're hiring and this is where we're going. So just trying to put that perspective. And and so we're we're getting there and it's quite different from last year at this time. It's it's crazy to see that. So I'm really thankful for Prop One and and everybody that's put in a full effort for, you know, sticking with and sticking with this short staffing and getting through the process. And now we're starting to see these results to where Lynn and I are actually on kind of a normal shift. We're just now getting off of our four on, four off 12s. So that's pretty nice for us. And so just, you know, kind of looking forward, you know, we mentioned staffing and stuff and that's kind of what a lot of I'm into right now is we we have that void of the commercial motorcade officer and Officer Eddie with traffic officer at some point, future looking, I'd like to have a dedicated traffic officer where we can address those those things. That's still one of the main things we get complaints about as a police department, one of the most common problems we deal with. Just an update, we are placing an officer in our pro act team with the county. And a lot of that comes in at the right time, the right time to do it with the Blake decision, it kind of a little, it it kind of ties us as far as what we can do in certain, with certain drug issues. So I think that's a good way to tackle that at this point and in the future. So I think that's going to be a good thing for us and we'll we'll definitely see how that works. But we're also kind of early in the stages with, you know, getting a rotating embedded mental health officer using the Skagit County model, their impact team. Now, timeline of this is, you know, variable, but they're working on it. And this was presented to us and I'm working on them trying to set a date for them to present to City Council. So you guys can hear all about that. I don't want to ruin all that now, but that is in the works. And it's kind of like an idea of rotating throughout the cities, not ours alone, but sharing, sharing that at no cost. So really, all we're all we're giving up is an officer, an officer's time on duty. So I think that's a plus and a look towards the future. I think that's all I have for now. Lynn, I'll pass that back off to you.
All right. So Dan mentioned the Blake decision. For those that haven't been following the excitement on on the state level, the Blake decision was that wonderful decision by the Washington Supreme Court to no longer have scheduled drugs like meth and heroin and cocaine being illegal. So right now, if I stop you driving down the street and you've got your your mirror covered in cocaine and you've got all of your app, you know, your stuff for using it, you haven't used it yet, but you just got to sit in there waiting, but you don't have your seatbelt on. I can write you a ticket for no seatbelt and wish you a nice day with your little thing of cocaine there and send you on your way. That's what, that's the, that's the drastic changes that we're having to figure out how to face in this, in this world we live in right now. And I guess that's a good segue into some of the things that we're going to be facing in the future. This last legislative session was not very friendly to police. There was a lot of bills that were being pushed that we're going to have to deal with the consequences. It's not all doom and gloom. A lot of the things that was pushed forward in this last legislative session session were already things that we've been working on since, I guess, the 2018 I-940 decision came in. That's been hovering over our heads for a long time with a lot of, a lot of, I guess, reform to the way police things are being done. So we were already starting a lot of those processes, but we got hammered hard in this last legislative session. And when we get to the full digest of how that's going to affect us and what it's going to do to us, we'll be passing that along. But we're already money ahead in that arena. Dan started the process over a year ago with getting us on with Lexipol. And Lexipol is our kind of training and policy and procedure management. Nikki is very familiar with it and was was extremely happy that we were moving to it. And the big thing that that will do for us will allow us to keep up with the changes as they're being done on a state level and on a national level with the way we're doing policy and procedures and how are, it's guiding our actions. In the past, we were just making this up as we went along and coming up with just the best practices, but we were always one, two, three, four, five years behind in keeping up with some of this stuff. So that's going to be in our future and and we're, we've got a lot of interesting things. I won't say exciting, but a lot of interesting things to look forward to with the changes in the legislature. We're going to be probably trying to develop some better data collection processes that'll satisfy some of these new mandates from the state level. And that'll be pretty important to, I I guess the big thing is, is there's a lot of fingers being pointed at law enforcement right now as continually doing the wrong thing. When in actuality, most of the agencies in the valley have been doing the right thing for a long time. That's why this is a good place to live and work and exist. But it's almost like the legislative mandates that are coming down are things that are going to require us to prove that we're doing the right thing all the time. But we're just going to have to roll with the punches. This is coming from our our lawmakers and we're going to have to live with the consequences of this. Dan talked a little bit about moving toward the embedded social worker, social services. We are getting hammered with people with mental health issues, homelessness issues, addiction issues that we're really good at handling it on the surface. But until we get some infrastructure built into the whole system, we can go catch, catch these characters and get them off the street and headed towards help every day. It's not going to help until the infrastructure's behind that to help, I guess, fix the problem. And then finally, one of the things that the mayor's brought up on several occasions, and I think it's coming from some of the, some of the things that are coming down on our shoulders is staff performance evaluations, which really kind of leans more to staff health as well. When you keep getting tasked with doing more and more and more and more and more all the time and then everybody's questioning you, it's going to question whether you even want to do the job. We still got a dedicated group of people. And I was talking to Dan right before the meeting that we're not seeing a whole lot of downturn on applicants for police jobs here in Cedar Woolley. And and I think the big part of that is the culture of the city of Cedar Woolley is an inviting place for people to come and work and people to stay. We've had a, just a group of people that the timing was poor for them to leave at about the time we needed them the most, but conversely, we got a whole bunch of people stepping up and say, pick me, I want to be a police officer. We've got a lot of great things going for us. We've got a lot of challenges ahead of us. We've got all of the things put in place to to answer some of these challenges. We just got to get people trained up and get some experience under their belt to be able to roll with the punches. And with that, Dan, anything else to add to that before I turn it over?
Nothing to add to that.
All right. And and Council, anything you'd like to ask while you got me on the hot seat right here? Come on, Carl, you got to ask something.
Yeah, I got a comment from Chief Tucker. I read very well, Chief. I I was taught to read and talk in shorthand. Instead of wasting my breath and saying, you all, I just say y'all. Or if I want a quarter, oh, I just say, oh, I don't say, oh, y'all. So, yeah, I get by, you know, I'm I'm from the old Southern school, but I work hard at it. I tried to lose this accent, but you just can't do it. So, but anyway, I appreciate your comment and I just want to let you know I can read very well and I I read a lot of books. But I guess I talk kind of weird, but I can't. I can't help that, man.
So any questions for the chief or the lieutenant? I want to keep this moving. We have several presentations and. It can be a long night if we keep dragging on. So questions?
I've got one. What chief, what's your turnover rate in a normal year?
That is almost possible impossible to give like a rate. You know, we went several years without losing anybody and then. We lose four in one year, but then we gain. Five back to replace the four that we lost and catch up. So that's really hard to say right now. I was taking some notes while we were for previous questions. When I started in the police department back in ninety two. I was officer number eight and Dave Pierce was officer number nine. We've just hired officer number nineteen. And she'll start on Monday and we have. I think we got one more waiting to to hire. So that'll put us at twenty. And then I've got four or five. Other staff members. So we're going to be at about twenty six when we're fully staffed.
What's it cost for one officer to bring him in from beginning till he's ready to hit the streets?
Well, just right off the top of my head, I think it's thirty seven hundred dollars is our cut for the academy. I'd have, don't hold me that completely. That's about right. But we're paying their wages the entire time. So you're talking, we're spending. Two to three months to go through a hiring process and we pay for that. It costs. Six to seven hundred dollars for the testing process, the polygraph and the psych testing. Are a little bit more. And then, like I said, their wages and then starting to outfit them. You got to figure a. Fully dressed, fully staffed officer with a family and all the wages and all that. I. I don't have the number right in front of me, but you're talking at one point, it was. Probably it's probably well over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. By the time we're going through the hiring, the training and all that, and that's mainly wages, benefits and gear and all that. Thank you. You bet.
So Kevin, if that's something that you would really like, I would suggest that you email Doug. And he'd be able to put those figures together for you and have that for you on Friday, if that's important to you to have exact numbers.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, if there is nobody else, then we will move on.
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
Thanks so much for a great report and thank thanks Lieutenant Dan as well. Appreciate all the hard work and the leadership that folks are providing. My question is from when we did Prop one, we talked about canine. I see the SRO or School Resource Officers levy dependent. So I'm just looking at. Kind of following up if the canine is something that is is down the road, is it aspirational or is our. Find public works director says illustrative.
Well, I would say right now that is kind of a down the road thing. Some of the things that came up from the legislative stuff that has come up this year. Talks about additional requirements for canines. Canines twenty percent of their time. Is given to training pretty much every week. So we would lose an officer right then. So we would, it would be tough to hold on to at that point. But right now we don't have anybody that we can plug into that role. We have. Senior officers with lots of experience, myself, Dan, Paul, Heather. Derek Low, Brian Hall, Brian Hall and. And Jed Kates are kind of in that middle one along with Derek and Katie. Then we're getting well, Katie and. Zach and Austin are kind of in that little middle realm there. And then I got a whole pile of new people. So we got all these new people that would be perfect candidates for that, but we haven't got them enough time on the road to be experienced to do that. So we've got some challenges ahead of us, SROs in the same boat. And we're waiting for the school to be able to decide which direction they want to go. It would be a poor decision to move forward on any of these things until we know. Our crystal ball clarifies a little bit and we see a little bit more.
All right. And so just just to follow up, have we lost any? Opportunities with encounters where the canine wasn't available from.
No, no, not really. No, not really. There we go. Thanks, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead. McGoffin?
Oh, thank you. Thank you guys for the presentation. I just had a quick question. In the past, records requests and processing was an issue. Is that still an issue? Is that something that we're kind of tackling with the Prop one or what do you foresee in the future with that?
It it's a bigger issue than it ever was before. Public disclosure requests are on the up. On the up and up, we've got lots of requests where we've got a really good formalized process. And Chandler Blunt, one of my my record sergeant is the main focus on this. And she works closely with Nikki, our legal. For a lot of those records requests, it's it's going to get worse. It's going to get, we're going to get more and more of those. And we're getting with all of our electronics, our body worn cameras and all that that we're wearing. Which is also a good thing that we've had for many years. But those also come at a cost. They cost with. Somebody that wants a copy of our video gets a copy. So. It's more complicated and it's more more time consuming, but we're 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 scrambling to keep up.
Question. Good question. Okay, so I'm going to move on and now I will bring in the public works department. So I'll begin with you, Mr. Freyberger. I know that you're also going to be presenting for the wastewater treatment plant Kevin Wynn tonight. So why don't you go ahead and and give your presentation?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to share screens here and and put on a PowerPoint presentation. Okay, did that come up for you folks to be able to see that?
Yes, it did. It did.
Thank you. So I've got a lot of material here and I'm going to attempt to keep it in twenty minutes. I'm using both Kevin's time and mine, so I'll probably slide through some of these slides pretty quickly. There are basically five different areas I want to touch on tonight, some more than others. I'll talk a little bit about normal operations here at the public works engineering. Side of things that support public works operations, that's street stormwater and facilities under. And cemetery under Nathan's leadership. Solid waste and fleet under Leo Jacobs and our wastewater division under Kevin Wynn. And I have three very talented supervisors running those departments and that makes that part of the operation for me. Relatively simple in terms of the oversight I give to those things and allows me to concentrate on some of the other things I'll talk about now. One major thing that I'm going to spend a little time on and John will no doubt give you some additional information. Is development review. David Lee, our city engineer. Handles most of the development review view from the engineering standpoint and right of way. And there has been some fairly large impacts from the growth that we're seeing in twenty one and twenty. Two and expected to continue into twenty three. I want to talk at some length about that. I want to talk just briefly on our storm water permit management, which is also under David's hat. And then I'm going to spend the most of my time talking about major capital improvements projects. And that's designed divided into a few different areas here. The Jones John liner trail corridor projects, as I've been discussing with you over the last number of years. Is a major focus for what we've been doing on the transportation side of things. And there's some news about on that. Our wastewater treatment plant laboratory operations building and also the public works building, which we're hoping to get out to bid in July. Is another major focus of what we're doing. Our wastewater treatment plant process improvements, which we are in the midst of doing. A number of kind of preliminary improvements to restore our plant. Treatment capacity to what our origin, our permit is actually for that plant. And I've spoke to you about that some in the past. And that will prepare us then for somewhat later in this decade. The next major plant expansion that will be coming up. We have a couple of major parks projects that Nathan will probably speak about more than I, but that's the Olmstead Park. A portion of that is already funded through the RCO program. And then Memorial Park, which we're still seeking funding for. And then all of our other miscellaneous streets, stormwater and wastewater annual projects, which are actually add up to quite a little bit of work. And then finally, I'll conclude this by talking about our engineering department staffing and some issues that have been going on for some time that. That is time for us to address. So moving on to number one, the normal operations. I've already kind of touched on this a little bit, but in in Nathan's. Arena, we have parks, capital projects, the parks we talked about. Facilities, American Disabilities Act upgrades. Now we just adopted our. ADA transition plan. And that brings in its train. A number of things we need to do both in our public right of way. And our buildings. And so I'll be working closely with Nathan to implement that program now and also with David on the right away side of things. So that's going to be a focus for us in coming years. Then local access, street project management inspection, we support Nathan's effort on. Efforts on that with both David's and Wally's time as needed. And then our stormwater utility. Solid waste and fleet. I mentioned already the new operations building, which we're in the planning for. We also support the annual rate reviews. And the equipment repair and replacement fund. We don't speak a whole lot about that, but that's a pretty huge undertaking. We have about a hundred twenty vehicles of various sizes and values. And over a sixteen million dollar replacement value for our current fleet. And out of public works, working with Leo. We maintain a spreadsheet system to manage. The. Replacement of those when it's proper to do so. And we have a pretty good war chest for doing that. And we want to keep that. Healthy going forward so we can keep our equipment in good shape to support all of the various operations of the city. And then on the wastewater side, we have our collection system replacement project management. We do about four or five hundred thousand dollars in. And pipeline upgrades, lining, replacement, those kind of things in an average year. Out of our rate utility funds. And I've already spoken about the NFTs. Permit restoration projects at the wastewater plant over the next several years. We've already been doing that. In fact, we're just now finishing the electrical improvements project. That we started last fall. That was another one of those projects and we'll be moving right in. To designing a project to remove the, once the new. Laboratory operations building is functional, we'll be demolishing the old lab ops building and remodeling that. The tanks that are under that building to perform their original function by putting in some mixers to make them aerated tanks. And then planning for the future wastewater upgrade, as I mentioned a minute ago. So development review. What we're seeing right now with permits that are already in or that are expected in the near future. As I talk about in twenty twenty one in that that slide you see. There there are up to two hundred and fifty seven units. That would be individual dwelling units, some of these apartment, some of them single family. That we see potentially will hit this year and next year. Now that's pretty huge. We we've been allowing in our facility planning for the wastewater facility. Seventy five units a year over the period twenty twenty to twenty twenty four. And then fifty units after that. That adds up to six hundred units over ten years. This, of course, is going to eat up quite a bit of that in a much quicker manner. And then looking ahead a little farther, we're seeing over twenty two and twenty three. A number of developments on top of that, which could potentially add up to another three hundred and ninety or so. And so that's a lot. That's six hundred and forty seven units potentially or about two hundred and sixteen a year. And we also have our background development of lot infill and small projects that are twenty or thirty a year on top of that. So this is a pretty big thing going on here in town. I have taken some time to take a look. At the effect of that on our sewer utility in particular, we have a wastewater treatment plant. I just did a presentation for you. On the sewer comprehensive plan a few weeks ago, talked about some of these things. And then our financial planning, we allowed, as I said, six hundred units. That's about fifteen hundred and fifty people. Growth over a ten year period, twenty twenty to twenty twenty nine. The units that we just talked about could be over a thousand. Over the next couple of years and then adding up to maybe twenty seven, twenty eight hundred people over the ten year period. So there's a fairly large impact and and I I wanted to take some time and look at that. That acceleration, what that means to the treatment plant capacity. And our ability to successfully run our sewer utility. Now, on the plus side, growth brings along with it two things that affect the sewer utility in a positive manner. First, the rate revenue will grow. By approximately five may five point nine million dollars over that ten year period. Over what we are collecting today. And that's that's pretty huge. Actually, you know, that's that's a big number. And that's just additional rate revenue on a monthly basis. It also accelerates the collection of general facilities charges. Over that same period by about four point two million over what we had previously planned. And so that's gives us a little flexibility on the financial side. Now, on the other side of it, we have capacity we have to look at. And so I've studied that. We we are permitted to operate under limits for both flow. That's how much water runs through the plant. And also biological loading. That's a biological oxygen demand and total suspended solids to give you the technical part. There's a few other nuances on that as well. What I can tell you from the studies we've done on the plant over the last four or five years is that. Our loading capacity exceeds our flow capacity. In other words, when we have to build a new plant, it will be driven by flow rather than by. Treatment. And so that's what we mostly focus on. In our planning at this point, I do watch those other things as well. I have to. But it's mostly a flow thing. So what does this additional growth mean for us? Six hundred ERUs or six hundred households. When I did my calculations on that most recently. We we have about. Twenty five percent capacity available still. And so the time to when we would have to do a plan to plan for the new plant. At that rate is about fourteen years or two thousand thirty four. And that's actually farther out than we currently are planning in our financial plan. We plan for. Basically in twenty six and twenty seven to look at doing. Well, twenty four and twenty five to do the financial, the facility plan and then a. Like an actual upgrade in twenty six or twenty seven. But the good news is this is this is a little farther out than that in actuality. Now we do have this growth to look at. And so with that kind of growth, we're looking at over a thousand rather than sixteen or six hundred. We're going to use up about five years of that capacity if that does grow at that rate. So that's the figure that I was looking for. What does this do to us? But I did mention that we were conservative in the financial plan and the sewer comprehensive plan. And so even though. We lose five years in terms of capacity. We were conservative enough, we're still going to be. At or near the end of this ten year period. And that's the next slide talks about that, just concluding that. So the financial plan remains valid. And we do need to, as we have been, update our. Figures yearly and bring that to your attention and we'll continue to monitor this as we go on. That's a pretty important thing to know. So our stormwater permit management, which David Lee and Wally Hoyt head out that part of it. And David manages our annual capacity grant. We get between fifty and eighty thousand dollars a year to support our. Our efforts on that. We mostly use it for street sweeping, just for convenience, but can be used for management or any other activities that support. Keeping the water clean in Cedar Woolley. David also does development, construction, stormwater permit reviews and and Wally has to inspect those and make sure they're doing. The best management practices to go along with that. And we are, they also have to inspect all public and private stormwater facilities annually. And then we have to respond to any complaints that come in through the Department of Ecology for someone who. Is doing something illicitly dumping antifreeze down a storm rain is an example of that or. Or grease and stuff like that. And all of all of those things do happen. By the way, and we do get calls and we respond to those. We have a few projects planned under the stormwater utility in the next couple of years, mainly our long. Delayed stormwater management plan up late date. I've been budgeting this for the last five or six years and we've been kicking the can down the road because of. Funding shortfalls, but there are events beyond our control that are. there are events beyond our control that are now going to drive us to getting going on this next year. Beginning the process the end of this year and continuing it into 2022. And that's about $150,000 effort. So there's two things that are driving that in our stormwater permit. We we are required by law to have in place a stormwater action plan, including a watershed inventory by March 31st of 2022. And then having a final plan in place by the same month in 2023. It also requires us to assume local source control program responsibilities. We had some grants a few years ago, those that were on the committee will remember to do this work and we were compensated for it by ecology to do that. Now they're just saying, well, you did so well with that. Now you just have to do it on your own nickel. And we have to show how we can do that as a part of our planning. So there's, those are things that are happening in the stormwater area. Now to kind of the meat of it, and I'm not going to get into the weeds on this. But we have a lot of projects coming. I mentioned the parks projects there. There's the numbers. Nathan has some small projects at the cemetery we'll be doing over the next two years. And our local access streets, we do about $150,000 of overlays, chip seals, crack seals on an annual basis. And Nathan's been prepping for those around town as as you've probably seen, if you've been out F and S grade road, he did some work on South Township today and other things to get ready for those. We also are going to be implementing more aggressively ADA upgrades, as were pointed out by our transition plan. And budgeting about $50,000 a year to do those kinds of things. This year, we're going to do, spend that money as a part of our Wicker Road overlay project to upgrade the ramps at the State Street and Township intersection. That was identified by our advisory committee as a high profile project. And so we plan to do that this year, along with our some ramps at Puget and Ferry. This map shows some of the various projects Nathan has planned around town, quite a few. This is a pretty average year for us and doing a lot of our local access streets. And as I mentioned, Wicker Road is a TIB funded overlay. We're doing that also this summer. David has that design just about finished and we'll be advertising on that for that in the next couple of weeks. And the arterial program account to our Fund 104, we also do some resurfacing projects under that, about 100,000 a year. That's normally been paid for by transportation benefit district funds, which looks like that survived so far in the system. So we are going to start spending that money, at least for the next couple of years. We get about $200,000 a year from that funding source. We spend 100,000 on this these maintenance projects and the other we use as match for things like the Wicker Road project, which is just below there. The Jones John Liner BNSF under crossing, which you've heard me talk about quite a bit. We did get the agreement signed back from BNSF on Monday. And we are, we have given them a notice to proceed on that work and I'm waiting to hear from them their actual schedule. They were committed to start the first week of May. They've told me now that they don't have enough pile yet. After telling me for months that they did. So that one might be delayed a little bit. I am in contact with Wash Dot Rails, who is our funding source for that. They still have time to get it done. They think it's about a 30 day project and they are planning to start May 10th right now. But if it does get delayed, it may push that date. If they do, then we'll do a supplement with the state and continue that a little, little farther. But we do expect it to happen in the next couple of months. The SR 29 Township and Intersection Improvements are in final design for construction in 2022. We have David's designing in house, the Cascade Trail Extension from Holt Camp to Hodgins. He should finish the design this year and next. And we have construction funding in 2023. We'll be applying for TIB funds to make up the shortfall of about 300,000 we have between this and the federal funds we already have. And we are going to be applying for funds for the SR 9 Township and McGarville Intersection again to TIB this year. I spoke with TIB at length today and they're they're still optimistic about that project. And there's some good news on the TIB front from talking to Ashley Probar. They expect to have their full allocation of funds this year. Which is about 90 some million dollars. We would have been funded last year on this project if they'd had their full allocation. But they were cut back by about 30% to 60 million and we just, our project was a bit too expensive. Let's see. The John Jones John Liner Road Bicycle Pedestrian Improvements, we have a federal grant for that that turns green in 2023 and we need to start designing that on that in 2022. And then the Jones John Liner Trail Corridor Projects, we're still seeking funding for the rest of that, as you probably know from our reports. We did apply for accounts for legislative funding through both the House and Senate. We did make it in both bills as they were put on the floor, but the bills did not get passed out of the session. So that'll be continued to the next time around. It was good news, though, that we made it in the House. We'd been in the Senate for a couple of years. Albeit, both of them were less than our 30 million asked. They were in the 10 to 15 million. But it would fund some of the critical parts of this and put us in a position to continue funding the rest of it with other federal and state sources over time. So some guardedly good news on that. This is the overview map for that, that you've seen a number of times. It shows the rail under crossing location, which they're going to be driving pile shortly. We have had a good thing happened on the west end, the section from Puffiness Grade Road to Jones has been built for us and was paved, I think, last week, haven't been down there this week. That piece is complete for us. We don't have to build that. We're also in discussions with the owner of the large parcel north of Cook Road on the right of way and getting a portion of the road built through that parcel. And as you know, we're in the in the appraisal stage for the Norman, the Nelson property to bring that project down. I need to finish up in my 20 minutes. Wastewater projects, there are some major projects to do there, as I talked about. I won't go into the details on that. I will make this slideshow available for you folks if you want to follow up on that. And then the stormwater utility I already talked about. To summarize all the capital improvements projects we see from 2021 to 22, it's about 13 million dollars. And to put that in perspective. We normally do about $5 million. It varies, some years or more, some are less, but it's averaged about $5 million a year. So this is a pretty big biennium for us, about double what we normally do. And on top of that, the projects that we've got planned for 2023 would add another 2.6. So we've got a pretty aggressive program ahead of us. I'm just going to go ahead to the engineering department needs and spend the rest of my time on that. There's four of us working in engineering, myself, David Lee, Wally Hoyt, and Julie Rosario. We do all of the day to day support operations for the public works and engineering departments. The general planning and oversight for all right of way and facility assets for the city. The the quarter plant, project planning, as I've talked about, and the wastewater treatment plant expansion planning that I've also talked about. And the lab ops and the public works building, those are the major projects, as I mentioned before. David does the stormwater permit review, development review, as I mentioned. He does design and project management for our general, our sewer collection system projects, as I mentioned before. And he also does design and construction management for some of the local access street projects that Nathan handles. That's generally a minor part. Nathan does a good job of putting those together. And then Wally does all the inspections for us, development permit, right away permit, wastewater grease traps, stormwater facility inspections, stream and storm outfall inspections, project management for the street and sewer collection projects that David designs. And he assists with contract inspection for the major capital projects that we usually utilize contract inspection and some construction management for. And then Julie, of course, picks up the pieces for all three of us and stays pretty busy doing all of that. So why am I bringing all this up? We are really stretched in my department. We have been for several years. As you know, we've tried to hire an engineer at least twice over the last three years with little success. But we have to get extremely serious about this now. What our plan is, is to look to hire a mid level professional engineer to support David. David is really stretched with the development review volume and the permits that are coming in. I had a 30 minute meeting minute with David two days ago. And in those 30 minutes, Michelle was in his office five my, five times with additional green files for him to look at permit stuff. His desk was covered with development review plans he was looking at. And he's trying to design two projects for us, the Wicker Road project and also the the Cascade Trail Extension Project. I'm asking more of him than than he has the time to do, and he's graciously doing everything he can. We've already had to make the decision to kick the can down on our sewer collection project till next year. And it looks like he'll be able to finish the other things, but it's it's difficult and he really needs some support. So the idea is to hire a mid level design professional that we can give the stormwater portfolio and do the minor project designs for like the sewer collections projects. Take that load off of David's shoulders so he can more adequately address the other parts that he has to do in his position. Also, in the middle section, you'll see that we are doing some succession planning at the department as well. The old clock is ticking and it looks like I'm going to be needing to retire within the next two years. I've been hinting of that to the mayor and Doug for quite some time and the mayor has asked me a number of times to prepare a succession plan for that, and I am doing that. And David himself also is probably within four years. He could be talked into staying longer, I'm sure. But both of those positions are are pretty critical to the city's continued success on the projects we've been building and we see will have to continue with the growth we're undergoing. So this, this is a first step on that, a down payment on that, if you will, to get some of the load off of David and myself by hiring a new position. And so that'll be, that'll be fleshed out over the next few months and we'll start that process hopefully this fall. That's all I have for you folks. I will make this available. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to take them. Thank you.
That was a lot of information that you had to get in there, wasn't it, Mark? Short period of time. Nice job. Thank you. Good. Any questions for Mr. Freiberger?
I just have one because I'm interested. The Cascade Trail going west, is that going to be sidewalk?
Yes, it'll be an eight or 10 foot shared use path, similar to what we've done on Highway 20 on other parts. It'll either be a concrete or asphalt. David's still working on the details on that, but yes, that's what the intentions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mark, Councilman Allen, just really quick, you what you were doing sewer comp plan, stormwater permit. You're you're giving us a lot of we need and we want. How do you propose that we pay for user fees as opposed to property tax? Or how how do you propose that we pay for these things? Thank you.
Well, the funding for the projects that we're presenting to you mostly is in place either through grants or through rate revenue from our utilities. The only part that that I highlighted there, the stormwater management plan, Doug and I still need to work out the details on that, but I'm assuming it's going to be out of rate revenue and we'll rob Peter to pay Paul on that. That's what we generally do. These major wastewater and collection system projects that I talked about. I'll be bringing to you council, if I can get that finished and reviewed by the mayor and Doug over the next few days. Either at the next council session or the following one, how we're proposing to pay for the wastewater treatment plant, lab ops building. We have budgeted a certain amount for that. We've got the actual engineer's estimate now and it's it's more than that, which is not surprising with the bidding climate out there right now and the COVID-19 effects. So I've got a proposal on how we can move forward with that project and I'll be bringing that through administration and you'll see that sometime soon. So we we have most of the transportation projects will be funded by grants plus impact fees that we're collecting. That war chest is starting in addition to my description of how the sewer utility is is being bolstered by the new service connections that are coming in. That's also affecting, that'll affect stormwater as well. And it will affect impact fees for parks and for quite a bit for parks, actually, and also for transportation. All of those will be used as match dollars to support those projects. So we're really not looking at at major impacts on the existing utilities at this point. Of course, Doug Doug has to get the fine tooth comb and look through all of that. And I know he's in the process of doing that. We've been having discussions about that as we go along. So you'll see each of these projects as we bring them forward, ready to go to advertisement. As usual, we'll bring a memo to you that tells how we propose to fund those things. So you get another look at the, all of these apples that I that I showed tonight. You'll get another look at all of those when they, when they get close to the time to put them out to bid.
All right. Thank you. Anything else before we move on? Okay, so thank you, Mark. And up next, which is just kind of a natural progression here would be Nathan Salsina for Streets and Parks.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm also going to do a share screen here for you guys. And I will try to speed things up for us here. Okay. So I just, for the sake of the newest council members, I just wanted to take a second to kind of talk about the Maintenance and Operations Division and who we are and what we do. So this is a couple of year old photo of our crew. Our main mission is to operate and maintain all city assets, including the transportation system that Mark talks about, parks, city owned buildings, storm drainage system, our two cemeteries in the the safest and best manner possible. This is just some of our positive press, clearing some storm drains downtown and picking up some snowdrifts a couple of years ago. And so this is my crew. There's 10 of us that are full time year round. And then there's 10 of us that are seasonal or part time. So altogether, we have a staff of 20 right now. There's just a little bit about our organizational structure. There's me, supported by the three crew leads and other staff. And we operate the division primarily out of these four funds, 101, 102, 103 and 425. That's the parks and facilities operations, cemetery operations, streets and the stormwater utility. Altogether, the the total funds is just over 3.5 million. So in Fund 101, we use that, those dollars to operate all the city parks and facilities and take care of all the rights of way with within the city. And then you guys are aware of all the, of all the different parks, properties. And then these are all of our public buildings that we oversee. And altogether, it's this total square footage of about 73,000 square feet. So it's a big footprint. And of course, we do the downtown hanging baskets and all the fun stuff to oversee the about 10 annual service contracts for all the life safety stuff for all the buildings, skilled trades, different things like that. And then we assist with parks and facilities, capital projects. Our goals for the next couple of years are basically just to continue with our current levels of service. Be consistent with city policy in the best way that we can. And design and construct phase one of the Olmsted Park Project, complete the community center renovation project, which actually is done. Install new roofs on Fire Station One quarters and the Bingham Park Picnic Building. Complete some upgrades to the Fire Station One Residence Quarter's Kitchen. We plan to resurrect the Parks Advisory Committee, which has been inactive for a couple of years and then continue to work on long range planning and fundraising as identified in our comp plan. And continue to work toward the reconstruction of Memorial Park. So you guys are familiar with the Olmsted site plan, just all the different improvements up there. I won't spend too much time here, but this, all this whole slideshow will also be made available for anybody that wants to come back to any of this stuff. So that project, phase one of that project, 1,307,500 of which is from an RCO grant. 400,000 from the Port of Skagit, 125,000 from the Sewer Utility Fund. 25,000 in donated labor and 257,000 from the Park Impact Fee Fund. So Memorial Park, as everyone's probably well aware, is in desperate need of some attention. It's one of our It's one of our last areas that we really haven't been able to identify funding for. If you go out there, you don't need me to explain why it needs some help, but this is a site plan of the proposed improvements. And so the cost of what we're looking at doing there, five hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for infrastructure, that's the utilities, sidewalks, drainage and all the, all that stuff, a hundred and fifty thousand for a playground and a hundred and twenty-five thousand for the splash pad element. Nothing too exciting in the, in the fund, the cemetery fund, we just use those funds to operate the two cemeteries and that includes grounds maintenance, burials, inerrments and disinterments, coordinating of funerals and the sale of burial plots. And our goals out there are just to maintain our excellent, excellent customer service, maintain the cemetery to the highest possible standards. Complete the Northern State Hospital Cemetery Improvement Project. We're hoping to get that done this year. And then just some other small projects out there. Then also very importantly, it's working with IT and all the other divisions is the implementation of the new records management and operation software, which we're in the process of working with right now. And I won't spend any time on this stuff. You guys all know that we have a lot of miles of city streets and a lot of catch basins and a lot of infrastructure. But that's just kind of an overview of everything that we have. And then on an average year, the routine maintenance stuff, you know, it's, it's not very exciting, but it's, it's important. It's, it's not project, but it's stuff that we need to do. Every year, we replace about four hundred and thirty-five street signs, apply three hundred and seventy-five gallons of traffic paint. And I won't go through all those, but we keep very busy. And our goals in the streets and stormwater area are to continue to maintain the system in the highest possible manner, respond to all citizen requests for service. And then we also have some federal compliance things, the MUTCD for our street signs, manual on uniform traffic control devices. Is a federal mandate that we have to maintain all of our street signs on a certain schedule. And then we've also got the NPT's permit compliance. We, we do the, the cleaning and inspection side of, of that in our division, whereas engineering handles the permitting. And then Mark mentioned the hundred and fifty thousand in resurfacing projects and then we assist with the bigger projects as needed and then our new headquarters project. It was just a little funny thing from one of my favorite movies. I'd be doing a disservice to my crew in the city if I didn't mention staffing as well every time I get a chance to speak with the council. Since I started with the city just under twenty years ago. We've added a tremendous amount of new infrastructure and new residents and all of these folks have increased demand for our services. And the last time that we added a new position in operations was in two thousand and two, so all these new roads and new parks and new regulations, it's just something that we're going to have to address sometime in the near future. So that's about all I have. Did I make it?
I think you did it in two minutes flat. Um, so that, there was a lot of great information there. If possible, could you please send that out to the council so that they do have that? I think that that is something that they would appreciate. I know that I appreciate the work that you put into this.
Just a minute, Mayor. This is Bill Chambers. I just wanted to say that I'm going to post all of these on the website as materials. So just, just to let you know.
Excellent. Thank you, Bill. Okay. Any questions for Nathan? Okay, Nathan, it sounds like you did it all in two minutes flat. That's extraordinary.
Nice. Thank you.
Great leadership there. Thank you. And then moving on to Leo Jacobs, our Solid Waste Director, or well, manager. Hey, Nathan, Leo, hello.
Hello. Okay. Anyway. Well, anyway, I'm going to tell a little bit about our department. Sorry, I didn't send out anything. I, it was a, I was really short on time when I was heading out for vacation here. So I, I didn't get everything out to everyone that I wanted to. But I'll just go over briefly on what, what's happening within our department, solid waste and the fleet. So our solid waste program, basically we pick up all the residential and commercial and industrial garbage in the city of Cedar Willy. We have about four thousand residential garbage customers and about three hundred commercial customers and that's also for recycling residentially and commercially. Basically, what's, what's been happening to us is I'm sure you've already heard is the, the growth that we're seeing here in Cedar Willy has really been, it's big on us. And it's really not, we saw the big developments coming here for my department, but what's been really sneaking up on us is the the infilling that's happening within the lot. So there'd be like ten, maybe fifteen infilling lots where somebody subdivides a lot. And then all of a sudden, we get another customer that we didn't know about and those add up when we when, when I first got here, we maximized all the routes to be as full as they could so we could save as much money as possible. So right now we are at the maximum for the garbage and recycling routes here. At least in the curbside end of thing, which is the residential. So that's been, that's been our biggest challenge and that's what we're seeing coming the most. So with that, we, you've already heard the staffing concerns with everyone else is so as more growth happens, obviously more customers come in, we will need a staff member sometime in two thousand and twenty-two. And we'll come with, we'll come forward with that when we, with our, what we need to do with rates and stuff like that and how we're going to fund it. Let's see. Let's see, on our recycling end of things, I know our curbside recycling, I'm going to speak, hopefully I don't go too fast, but curbside recycling is the residential end of things where we pick up the recycling at the residence. So when I talk about that and then we have a site recycling site where people come to our site at three fifteen Sterling Street and then they drop off our recycling. So our curbside, the pressure on us right there is the, the cost of the processing and the cost of how much it is to recycle a commingled product, which is where all the recycling is mixed together. So that's been the pressure on us there. So we've been trying to adapt to that. We'll be working with the Utilities Committee coming up here real soon to explain how we're going to be able to address going forward with the curbside recycling and the costs. The other thing, okay, on the site recycling, I want to say we're doing really well with that. That is a source separated site where we separate the cardboard, metal, mixed paper and some of the other recycling products and glass and stuff like that. And what we're seeing there is some of the pricing for those is coming up a little bit. So we're actually getting a few dollars back. I, I don't like to count on that as a revenue source because the commodity markets are so volatile. So it's up and down, like it's been horrible the past year, but it's just starting to come up into the, you know, forty-five to seventy-dollar mark. So that's really nice. So we get a little bit of return for our cardboard, our metals and our mixed papers. Our site recycling for the yard waste is doing very well. The customers really like that. They, they're having a good time. We get about a hundred and hundred and fifty customers on a Saturday, thirty or so, thirty to fifty customers on a Monday. They really like the free program that the city offered just recently. So that was, they want to see it twice a year. But it just depends on funding and, and how, how we want to tackle that. Oh, I, one thing I don't get to talk about is our recycling program for the residential, which is our curbside yard waste. That, that growth is happening very, very rapidly also. We're gaining about a hundred customers a year. And for us, when we're running just one day a week and we're running two trucks, that is substantial. So we're, it's been growing about a hundred customers a year for the last four years now. So that's, that's really good for us and that's a volunteer program. So, okay, with that, what we want to do on the solid waste end of things, and one of the things I really want to work on coming up is I want to work on the communications with our customers. That I want, I want to have better communications with them and, and a wide variety of how to communicate with them. I still get a lot of people saying, wow, this is a great site that you have down here for recycling, but I lived in the city for five or ten years and I didn't even know it was here. So I think that's going to be one of our challenges is working with IT on how we're going to be able to get some information out to those to those customers and let them know that there's the different programs that we have. Okay, I'm going to hop over onto Fleet real quick and just briefly. And the Fleet Department has been very challenging this last year, especially with COVID. What we're seeing now is the new equipment ordering is for larger equipment is somewhere around one year out. So when we're planning for like a garbage truck, for instance, or a bucket truck, they're telling us that it's going to take about one year for it to get in the pipeline, get built and get to us. So it's really tough to think about when we're going to order a truck. Let's say at the end, in December, we might not see that till the following December or a little bit after. So it might take a little bit of planning, a little bit of adjusting on, at least for that end of things, for ordering some of the larger equipment. Let's see, what else do we got here? Oh, okay. Also on the Fleet end of things is parts ordering has been just awful if you, if you know what's been in the COVID world here. We've just ordering parts have been weeks and weeks out. So occasionally we get bogged down at our site there for, with the mechanic. When we have to order parts and we have to stage three or four pieces of equipment because that part is coming from literally the factory floor or they're making it, they're making a hundred of them that week. So then we're on that ordering list. So that's been very challenging and it's making equipment time for getting it up and running sooner. It takes a little bit longer. Let's see. And so on the, the Fleet end of things too with that is one of the other challenging things is I try to remind all of the other departments when they bring stuff in and they want it fixed right now, that we do only have a part-time fleet person that is there for three and a half days during the week, or is it four and a half days? It's three and a half days. And so that's been challenging and over the course of the next couple of years, when, when and if we get a new operations building to where we can get our departments in and maybe start taking care of it, we will need to look at hiring a second mechanic, a full-time person. So, okay, I tried to nail it all there as quickly as I can, get under ten minutes so we can so we can move on there. So anyway, I'm open for questions.
Any questions for Leo? So Leo, maybe just some clarification because you did say at the top of your presentation that you will need another position filled by two thousand and twenty-two. And then, and you also shared that you're going to need another mechanic. So do you want to clarify, is that the same, is that the same position you're speaking of? Or are they two different positions so that the council knows what you're looking at?
Oh, excellent. Thank you. Yes, a solid waste department, we will need a, another driver. And that's just for the garbage end of things. He'll need, him or her will need to be out and running the routes with us. That'll help cover it up. That, and that will save me having to make the routes go to five days a week. I think I'll be able to keep them at four days a week. It depends on how much growth we have and how fast it happens. Mark Freiberger brought up that there's a possibility of three hundred and fifty houses in two years. That would definitely put us over the limit of, of being done in a reasonable amount of time. So that's for, the driver will take care of her garbage only. And then the fleet person, that's probably more like looking at two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four, depending on building the, the new building. And that would be a separate person in the fleet department. So two different.
Okay. Is there any more questions for, for Leo before I move on? All right. Thank you, Leo. Good report. Hope you enjoy the rest of your vacation. Thank you for popping in.
Thank you.
Okay. So we will move to the Director of Building and Permits, John Coleman. You're on.
All right. Thank you, Council Mayor. I think we're hearing a theme here from some of the other department heads is, is grappling with growth. So I think I'm going to, going to share my screen and I'm going to if I can do this from the iPad here. Now, is that, is that being shared now? Are you seeing a, a Building and Planning Department slide?
I'm, I am not. I don't know if anybody else is.
Not yet, John.
Let me know if you want me to share that for you, John.
Yeah, why don't you share it for me, Bill?
Okay.
A little tougher from the iPad.
That's right.
Apologize for that. So what we're seeing is a lot of population growth. And so I thought that I'll probably change gears a little here and focus on some of that. What I wanted to start with is just, you know, what our department does. And in a nutshell, we provide we, we, sorry, getting distracted by Bill's changing the screen. We try to promote the general health, safety and welfare of the citizens of Cedar Willy and prepare for future growth in the city. Now we do that through the Building Department, administering permits. And we do that through the Planning Department, which does multiple things, which is, you know, land use permits. And, and of course, develop regulations for, for how development occurs in the city. We also plan for future growth in our comp plan growth projection processes. I'm going to talk to you later in the slide presentation. Next slide, please, Bill. So first and foremost, you know, we just administer state, federal land use development regulations. So as people need to develop their land, we make sure that, that the land is divided according to state and city regulations. So the city regulations are under the municipal code. And we update those regularly and that's what we go to the Planning Commission with and then bring to the City Council for development code changes. And the goal there is to have regulations in place that both protect the neighbors and the citizens that live here and make development possible for the people that want to develop their property. And, you know, property rights is an important function of what we're, what we do and make sure that people are able to use their property in the way that they would like to within, of course, the city's wide-ranging goals and policies. We also let people know through the public notice process when development is happening. And you've probably seen a lot of those notices going out and hearing from the people in the, the city that have received a notice and have questions. And so we help with that. Next slide, please. So we really strive to provide high-quality professional customer service. We've always, for many years now, called ourselves the Friendly Planning and Building Department. We, we hear about horror stories from other department, other cities where the planning department and building department tell them, no, our goal is to get to yes, to help people get through the process and not just put up roadblocks. Again, our goal is to help customers and protect the city's vision. We also strive for quick turnaround time and we do an excellent job with that and we're always striving to do even better. We like to be able to spend time with customers and, and and create good relationships and good customer service. Next slide, please. So since we're talking about population today, our current population, according to the Office of Financial Management, I'll refer to them as OFM, is eleven thousand, eight hundred and ninety. And as you can see from the slide, over the past five years, we've added about twelve hundred new residents and then over the past ten years, just thirteen hundred. That in, that's talks about the time when, covers the time when we're in the recession. But if you look back to two thousand, you see between two thousand and two thousand and five, we saw a tremendous amount of growth. And not all of it was, was done well. There was a lot of growing pains in that time. So we've, we learned a lot during that time and have increased our capacities and our processes and our staff has we have a top-notch staff and we'll talk about that as well. So the two thousand and twenty-one population, I'll mention briefly. So the 2021 population, I'll mention briefly, is uh is not official yet. We looked at the number of permits that we issued over the past year. And um if, if we budget 2.59 persons per unit, that'd be about 150 new residents in the city uh in in 2021. Now, that number may come in different. I think I've spoke about this before. Job Corps closed down for the most part or during COVID, so they lost 200 people. So our population may actually show a loss of 100 people. It depends on how OFM decides to update our how to count that uh Job Corps. Next uh, next slide, please. Now, this year has been a little bit more active in permits. Uh, I'm just going to go over this briefly. The between May 1st, uh this year and last year, we received total permit applications for about 268 residential units. Of those, 23 have already been completed, 60 are under construction and the rest, which is 88, 185 units, are in the permitting stage. The vast majority of those are in two large mixed-use uh projects, one of 76 units and one of 67 units. And a lot of these figures are what Mark used to talk about the the ERUs for the sewer department. Now, you can see that this is, this is a big jump from what we've seen in previous years. And you know, that's the way growth happens is it tends to be a little bit in fits and spurts. Between September of 19 and September of 2020, we saw 36 new residential units have been completed and 35 under construction. So we're a little bit ahead of that on our single-family construction now, which is not surprising because we had several, we had a couple of large uh developments. Uh subdivisions happened that were, uh have enabled some new growth. And growth is just big right now throughout the region. Next slide, please. Now, I'm going to skip over, if you want to look at this later, this has, the next couple of slides is a breakdown of things under construction. And then the next slide is uh things and planning. I'm not going to go over that now. Uh, don't have enough time to talk about those in detail, but I'm happy to talk to council about specific projects at any time. Uh, next slide, please, Bill. Uh, and then this, these are uh projects that we're seeing down the road that people have spoken to but uh haven't, aren't quite ready to submit for permit applications. Next slide. So the point is, we are in a, in a boom time, so to speak. And all of these, all of these new residents and units equate to a need for planning for infrastructure and staffing. And it shows the importance of our comprehensive planning update process that we do every eight or nine years, according to the state. They, they change the, they change the timeline or depending on uh whether or not we're in a recession or not. So our last update was due in 2016 and it was supposed to be due next year, uh in 2024. They pushed that back to 2025. And then what happens in that comp plan update is, is, is when we look at our urban growth area and we then determine uh if we need to expand it or not, as well as a full update of our comprehensive plan and a full update of our critical areas ordinance. So those are three major undertakings that are all due in 2025. The first step of that is through the Office of Financial Management, they'll, they'll uh produce an estimate uh what are, what the state's population projections are for 20-year period. They'll put those out uh probably late, late next year. Uh, if, if, if everything goes the way that they normally go, that's due in 22 and it usually comes out in about in August. Then the Skagit Council of Governments, the, the planning departments from each of the the Skagit governments, we get together and work with the, the SCOD steering committee to determine what is the likely projection, projected growth over the next 20 years uh in the county. And then we can, and then we divvy it up amongst each of the jurisdictions based on past performance of population growth and and what each city can then also handle. And through a, that planning, that cooperative planning process, the, the city will receive a 30, a 20-year projection, a growth projection. We then take that uh growth projection and we have to determine, can we meet those projected, that projected growth? And that's going to be both residential, commercial, industrial uh growth. So what we start with is a land capacity analysis. That's going to be uh a parcel-by-parcel review of all of the land within city limits and determine how much land we have that is currently buildable. And at our current zoning densities, how many units can we provide? How many units can be built on that available land? And that land capacity analysis is, is a pretty big undertaking. In 2014, we had a, a consultant do it for, uh do that analysis for us. And it took them probably six months. We anticipate uh enlisting the services of a consultant to do that again in either 2022 or 2023, uh depending on when the SCOD process determines what our projection is, uh projected growth is going to be. So I'll be making an ask for a consultant uh financing for that land capacity analysis, possibly in the next year's budget. Also, um, with the housing crisis that's been occurring in Skagit County, one of the important things that we'll be reviewing while we're reviewing our comprehensive plan update is our housing element. It's due for a major update. The last time we did it, we just did kind of a, a minor update, but it's due for a major update. And based on the housing climate in, in the valley, it's really due for uh a, a good review. And uh, so we'll probably need some assistance from a consultant to put something uh together for that housing element as well. So that would also be something that we'll be asking for in the 2022 and 2023 budget as we work towards completing our comprehensive plan update that's due in June of 2025. So we really need to have that work, that comp plan done and for, available for review by the beginning of 2025. So we have time to really run it through the public review process. And uh, and there's several elements to that too, you know. In our comp, in our comp plan, we've got the land use element, uh the housing element. There's a public utilities element, a big one, another big one is the capital facilities element. And we work closely with the public works department, the fire, the fire department and the police department to determine what the city needs are based on our projected growth. And that's, you know, that's where the rubber really hits the road. We're, we do this uh 20-year planning process to assist with all of the things that the department has been speaking about today. You know, Mark's sewer plans, you know, they, they know how much sewer capacity they have and had uh and then we give them the information of how uh, how much population we're expecting. And that all feeds into the city's ability to grow and meet our growth needs over the next 20 years. So it's, it's really vital to, to have our comp plan update done well in 2025. And uh, so we look forward to that process and and working with the rest of the departments to, to come up with the projections and help them update their, their various elements of the comprehensive plan. So besides that, um, you know, the other issue that people have been talking about, the department heads have been talking about today is staff. We're doing pretty good, even though with the crush of, of permit applications that we've been experiencing. And um, we're in a bit of a pickle at the time. Am I, am I running out of time here? We're in a bit of a pickle uh because we need to replace our building inspector and plans examiner who's attempting to retire. Uh, he's been kind enough to stay, that's Tony Niskin and uh and, and help us out as we have not been able to find a replacement for him. So I, that, that's something we, we need to get done in the, the short term and not the long term. But in uh overall, we just are looking to continue to support our existing staff. That includes Michelle Grace, our permit tech, and Catherine Weir, our assistant planner. And then myself and Tony are to round out the rest of the department. And we hope to continue to meet the time expectations of developers and be, and help the people at the counter, when we get back to the counter and talk with the people of Seadrally and understand their needs and uh continue to support the planning commission as they do updates to the codes to make sure that future development uh meets the, 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 the goals of the city council. Next slide. And that's really, that's really all I have to, to speak about today. We still, we have a good relationship with their development community today. They're very enthusiastic about working with us. And uh we're seeing that people enjoy working with our department. We want to be able to continue to do that, even as uh development pressure hits, hits hard and heavy currently. Next slide, please. And that's all I have to present to the council tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have for the planning department.
Are there any questions for John? Nice job. Thank you, John. Okay, so moving on, we will move to director of IT, Bill Chambers.
Okay, for the sake of brevity and to give uh Doug a little more time for his presentation, which I think is uh pretty critical. I'm not going to skip the slideshow. It's in the packet if you want to refer to it uh now or later. Uh, so basically, uh information technology touches every corner of our city's operations from security systems, file and database servers, to email systems, proprietary sewer treatment systems, financial software, public safety, mobile data terminals, radios, mobile phones and tablets and every network and firewall component that provides the secure connectivity to those devices. Whether it's radio, cellular, wifi, ethernet or gigabit fiber optics, our department of two full-time employees provide support for all of these in all departments. On top of that, we also manage the city website and uh Intranet site and the Facebook page. Um, the individual department's budget for some of the larger technology projects that are specific to either their department or um a small group of departments. So I'm just going to talk about the ones that, um, for example, that would be the cemetery software, uh Springbrook Financials, uh things like that. I'm uh just going to talk about the ones that are uh include the, the scope of the entire city. So basically, that's uh the cloud-hosted Microsoft Exchange server, uh cloud-hosted Smarsh archiving platform, cloud-hosted GovQA public record system. Um, and those two last ones, by the way, in conjunction with the um evidence.com slash Axon uh camera system, those um are really going to help the police department respond to the uptick in records requests. So we're lucky that we've already got that, uh those tools in place to make it easier for them. Um, also the revised content management system for our website, uh the Microsoft uh enterprise agreement, which is our, our uh licenses, client licenses for Windows uh clients and uh servers, server uh licenses. We've got um the WatchGuard Internet Firewall system, which is uh protects us from a lot of malware. And uh we've got our Mitel IP phone system, which um I haven't included uh uh estimate for replacing in the, the, in 21, 22. But I think that we'll, we'll look at replacing that um in the 23, 24 biennial budget. The uh network hardware that we have on a, a rotating schedule, depending on the, the type of use for that hardware, uh we need to replace that uh air, components of that every year as well. Some of the initiatives that we'd like to do um and would like to do those through cost savings and replacing existing systems, uh so the budget impact would be relatively small. Um, one thing that COVID, the, the pandemic has, has taught us is that there, we, we need alternate ways of getting the work done. Uh, that's pretty essential. Um, our technology initiatives will continue to focus on availability, redundancy and mobility while maintaining the security and compliance for critical information like uh the CGIS, HIPAA and other sensitive data. Some of the things that we want to do, get gigabit fiber internet service uh through SkagitNet partner provider uh at City Hall and our entire land. Uh, convert Microsoft Office Enterprise licensing to Office 365 and merge it with the hosted exchange subscription for potential uh cost savings there. Uh, explore MS Office 365 email archiving uh as an alternative for the email component of, of the Smarsh archiving platform for another potential cost savings and streamlining. Explore a host of endpoint protection and security software like BitDefender, ESET, uh Sopos or other uh systems. Now that so many employees are, are using mobile devices outside of our local area network, uh ensuring the highest possible standard for endpoint protection and reporting is vital. Uh, also like to explore um switching to Azure Active Directory domain services through Microsoft. This would uh um basically be like a domain controller authentication um in the cloud. And um that we do a hybrid model um so that we would ha- have a local server uh system as well in case uh there's no internet access. And that's it for me. I hope I did that uh quick enough.
It's a lot. And sometimes when you speak, I think you're talking another language, which obviously you are. Technology, something that some of us really rely heavily upon you and Glenn to get us through, so.
Well, I realize we're kind of running out of time, so if there's any questions, I can take those online or offline.
So are there any questions for Bill? He and Glenn do a great job. Just the two of them, they cover a lot. So I, I am going to propose, thank you, Bill. I am going to propose that even if we run over 10, 15 minutes, that we, we do that unless somebody is um has objections to that, giving um Doug time to speak to both the finance department needs and also to speak to um city supervisor situation and what he's working on. So are there any objections to that?
Yeah, I moved to extend the meeting to 8:15.
All right. And do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Sarah. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. And actually, I think we didn't even really have to do that. I think just my requesting and putting it out there. And as long as I didn't hear an objection, you know, that carries, that carries the weight. Okay, Doug, you're on.
Hey, good evening, mayor and council. I'm gonna pop my share screen up here. And give me a head nod if my slide is up there.
Looks good.
Good deal. Okay, so as the mayor mentioned, I'm going to go ahead and cover finance. Uh Jill met with me today. We went over some of the finance issues and things. And so I'm gonna run through uh just our revenues, really, in a general sense. This last year, uh when I was putting my slides together, I was trying to find a picture of someone hanging on by their fingernails. I couldn't find a good one to put up there, but that's what this year's been like. Uh, you know, we started out with COVID, uh thinking we're going to lose 35% of our revenues and and uh we have such a great staff here. We all got together and everyone put together a contingency plan. The even better thing about it is we didn't need it when it came down to it. So uh really odd things happened. So really odd things happened that you wouldn't expect, but then they made sense. For example. It doesn't mean everybody in CJ Woolley who owns a business came through unscathed. But the city organization, from a revenue standpoint, we came about out on our original budget targets. And when I looked through our sales tax database, I think I've shared this a little bit before. Amazon dot com was our saver this year. Because what we lost in brick and mortar stores and local purchases. There was a huge increase in orders online, which probably isn't a surprise to anyone. So it'll be interesting to see as the pandemic goes on or people are vaccinated. Our spending habits going to change or is this our new normal and how do we budget going forward? So that's going to be an interesting way to do business for a little while. So looking at the slides, I'm going to go ahead and go through just our our primary revenue sources. So you can see a little bit on how we're doing and what we're projecting at this time. So this first one slide is property taxes and how you look at these. This is your twenty eighteen, over to the right is your twenty twenty two. So we're kind of talking about this area and what we think we're going to be seeing over on the right. Property taxes looks a little funny because we go along for a couple of years and there was a big jump. That was proposition one. And as you can see, I I've split our property taxes down to where we spend it. So this bottom blue box here, that's the general fund. You can see in twenty twenty, that's where the jump came and that's because it's paying for the police. It goes to police department. The red box is money from the property taxes that goes to the parks fund. And you can see it stayed pretty calm, pretty sick, pretty even. The cemetery fund is a small piece. Streets gets a piece and then finally the library fund gets part of our property taxes as well. And that part in the library fund that pays for our share of running the library with the library district. Going to our sale taxes real quick. On this graph, you notice how this seems pretty flat right across the top. That's kind of what our sales taxes look like. And the middle column is our twenty twenty actual. When you look at this, we've actually, I'm projecting to come down a little bit, at least for now. One of the things you get in your sales taxes is construction sales tax. So we have our core sales tax where people are shopping, they're paying for things every month and we get that in. Every once in a while, we get large construction contracts, it gets sales tax. We'll get it for a few months, maybe a year. The project is done and then that stream turns off. So we had the library construction project and some others that were adding into our sales tax base during twenty twenty. And as you've seen, we have a lot of potential construction activity coming. It's just right now, we have to get them kind of out of the permit stage and approved and then I can start revising maybe our sales tax numbers. Now, new housing doesn't always equate to sales tax. If a builder is building a spec home, they'll sell it and there might be a sales tax component to it. If there's a custom, maybe I'm saying this backward, a custom house, there might be a sales tax component to it. If a builder is just selling a house on property, there may not be the sales tax component to it. So until we know exactly how builders are selling those homes, I can't quite project what that impact will be. But that's where if you see sales tax come along and there's a little slight dip. It's typically because I'm seeing maybe a little bit of a trade off of construction projects. Utility taxes is getting to be a pretty good portion of our general fund revenue. There's a lot of colors on here is because we have a lot of different utility taxes that we collect. For the most part, these have stayed pretty steady. Areas like our phone tax and Comcast, those have reduced over the years. The data portion of cellular packages. Some of those are not subject to utility tax. And of course, when you get the company's report to us. Of course, a lot of their revenue is from data packages. So we have seen some of those shrink over the last few years. But overall, you can see these bars or these columns are steadily increasing a little bit. So we're still showing pretty strong as far as the utility taxes go. This is a graph that now combines all those taxes, blues property tax, red is sales tax. Green is the utility tax. Now, the little jump you see here between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. Again, you see the blue section increase, that's proper one. So that has pushed us up. We have just a slight increase each year. We probably run about one and a half to one point nine percent increase in our tax base each year. So this is the squirrely one of the bunch. This is licenses and permits. As you can see, twenty nineteen, we had a big year on getting fees and then it quiets down. Twenty one and twenty two, we projected low and we did the budget or at least on part of twenty twenty. But as you've heard from John and Mark and everyone, these numbers are going to change. So we're going to be on our toes really watching what that does. One of the things as John talks about new staff. Permitting fees and things usually cover part of that. So we're looking to see if those things come in tandem and then we can help. Maybe look at some of these staffing issues and things and same with Public Works and Mark's area. So permits we have just kind of even right now. But as we start seeing these numbers coming in now on new permits. And as we start closing out those applications, we'll start adjusting these numbers to reflect that additional permit revenue. And somehow I got the same name on here. So what this should be is shared revenues on this title right here. So shared revenues are monies we get from the state. They collect it for us. Or they collect some kind of revenue and we get a piece of the pie. So on a lot of these, we have grants make up a small piece. You can see a thin green line. That's our grant portion from federal grants. State grants are a little bit more, you can see through here. And the purple part is most part, this is shared revenues. These are things like your liquor excise tax, liquor control board profits, other things like that from the state that come in. And these can go up and down. They're based on consumer spending, at least for the shared revenues. And grants are dependent upon which projects we're doing and what we have coming in at the time. One thing to show your attention to is this middle column. There's a blue square at the bottom. That was a good chunk of money we got. That was the COVID relief money we got this last year. So that's kind of pushed that column up for twenty twenty. The ARP program, the American Recovery Plan. CJ Woolley, they've said we're getting two point six million at least allocated to us. If we can come up with things to get reimbursed for. So we're digging deep to find out everything we can to maximize that. That'll change as twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two columns. It'll be handled by the Department of Commerce. And there's a nasty rumor that they'll give a piece of it this year and maybe a piece of it next year. But at some point, we'll get that in. We just don't have the final word yet on how commerce is going to handle that. And just quickly, these last one, charges for services, someone asked earlier. Do we do a fee for our service? So yes, we do. Some of our things here like fire transport fees, building review fees. And we'd have our fire protection agreement with Fire District Eight. We have an interlocal with them. Where we provide services to them and we charge them for that service. So you can see these are pretty steady in here. If you look from twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen, that blue bottom piece there. That jumped up. That's when we started doing our fire transport fees. You might have heard of G E M T, the Ground Based Emergency Medical Program. We get extra money for that and then we're also now getting funds for our ambulance service. So that's really the overview, the financial overview of the general fund. Just in a few words, really, we're doing okay. From where we were at a year ago and not being certain because of COVID. We came out all right. We're actually hitting on our targets. We'll see how it goes. I'm expecting that will probably stay about the same this next year. Unless something, you know, comes out of the woodwork, just like COVID did and surprises us. But I'm pretty happy and and I do have a lot of thanks to our department heads too. When it came down to this time last year, everybody jumped in. And we were ready to go with whatever we needed to do. And fortunately, we've been able to hang in there. So no fingernail pictures on my slides today. So what I'm going to include in the slide package, I'll send it out to everybody so you can have it. This is a breakdown of the the finance department, myself and Jill. Then each of our staff in here and a little bit about what each one of them does. Some of the things we've been talking about recently is continuing our cross-training. When you look at succession planning, there's a good thing when you look at a city and you see a lot of long-term employees. From a succession planning standpoint, it's kind of the opposite a little bit. You have to really be on your game. And really be planning because you could end up with two or three people leaving at the same time. That's a lot of historical knowledge and everything going out the door. So if we could get people to leave their blame brains behind when they retire, they leave, that would be great. But the best thing we can do is cross-train and make sure our procedure manuals are current in doing that. So I'll send this out to you so you have this organizational chart of the finance department. And you can put some functions to the names of people you hear us talking about or that you meet at the counter. So the goals for the finance department, there's one thing called a balanced scorecard. And what this is, it's some people have heard of SWOT analysis, SWOT meaning strength, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. Balanced scorecard is when we start looking at what I call performance measurements. And I've worked with cities where all our departments, we run through performance measurements just to show growth and those things. When you hear about Mark talking about an uptick in development review and John's talking about new permits. We have some benchmarks we set to say, here's our normal amount of workload that we do. And then what we project for the next couple of years. And when the actuals come in and we see it's starting to really exceed those projections. We know we have to be on our game again as far as getting to prepare for how are we gonna logistically handle those increases like that. So the finance department is going to be putting together a balanced scorecard. And that just identifies his lines of services and it's almost like a mini SWOT analysis on each one of those. So we can plan and really be ready for things and be flexible as they come. The next item is just completion of financial policies. Council did a great job. Pre-COVID, we adopted a whole new set of financial policies. There's a few more to go. Just things that I've noticed over time that would be good for us to have a benchmark. And at least something that's our roadmap that says, here's how we do business. The next item is onboarding a new finance director. That's been a trying process, as you know, this last several months. We are, it is in good news right now. At least we're in negotiations right now with a really strong candidate. We don't have a definite offer and acceptance out there yet, so I can't share the information yet. I don't want them to get surprised at their place of employment. I think you can can appreciate that. But we'll hopefully be moving forward with that and maybe potentially have someone on board here before too long. And then the other thing is technology updates. Bill, as you heard, he's been doing a great job of updating our technology. Especially getting into the cloud-based applications and those types of things. We have two or three in the finance department that'll really be helpful. We do a lot of paper pushing. And there are some things I think where we can decentralize some of our things like preparing the agenda packet. Everybody sends their paper in and Christine spends a good couple of days just trying to get that formatted and put together. We have a software package that everybody can put it into the software package and itself prepares the packet. And that would give Christine more time to work on some of her other things and help with that. So there's some efficiencies we can do. You just have to get over that initial hurdle, that little mountain first before things get better. But nothing ventured, nothing gained. So we'll get there. So I can just take a quick break here. Any questions on the finance information that I presented?
Any questions for that? All right, perfect.
All right, no takers. So I'm going to jump to the city supervisor. This is kind of what my office is working on. Kind of the administrative and strategy side of this. And I just put together one slide to kind of give you a thumbnail sketch of what I'm doing. And my goal overall is to look at our functions and get us to be proactive versus reactive. And we do fine, we've handled our workloads and done different things, but there are some areas. That sometime I would like to talk to city council about just for strategy purposes. But for the main part right now, most of my day is meeting with Mayor Johnson and going through project coordination. As you hear the other department heads talk. You know, when you're when you're a manager, you get in front of people and you lead the way. When you're a leader, you get behind them and support them. So I've kind of learned, you know, it's, hey, these guys know what they're doing, get out of the way, but just give them the support they need and make sure, you know. If they have a project going and I can help them connect up or whatever they need. I mean, that's the goal that I have. The second area is risk mitigation. I talked to the mayor this last turn of the year. About the Finance Council Committee. And I asked if we could change it to finance and risk management. And I think one of the things I've seen in my time as finance director here and then the job I'm doing now. There are a number of things that we don't have in place right now and we haven't needed them. We've been fortunate. That, you know, we've avoided some of the things that some cities struggle with. But that doesn't mean they won't ever happen. And I think it's good for us to be looking at risk management to make sure that we have our bumpers in place. So we know how we're doing business and when things come up, we immediately know how to handle those. So under risk mitigation, I put policy development. We're working on an employee policy manual. I think we're looking at around the end of May, first part of June of rolling that out. We'll have that ready for the mayor's review and getting that out. But I think I mentioned, we'll be going from about eight pages to probably about a hundred pages. And it's just since nineteen ninety, the world of HR has grown dramatically. And in fairness to your employees, they need to know what the city's policies are and what their benefits and payment is and how the city operates. And that's what that will be. I will continue working on a strategic financial plan. We still have some things to kind of work out and change a little bit from how the city's done some things over the last several years. I will move ahead on that. Another section, it's kind of a an odd one sometimes, it's just ethics. As I've looked around, you know, we have some a little bit of policies on some of these. These are things like conflicts of interest. You know, it's probably my finance brain a little bit thinking about wanting to make sure we have policies in place. That say, hey, you can do this or you can have this job while you're working with the city. Or no, maybe your your son can't come and work for you in your department. So you know, those types of things like that, we want to make sure we have those all in place and we've actually adopted those as policies. And the new one, the new buzzword out there this last month has been diversity and inclusion. And I think it's probably time for us to look at that as well. Those aren't just buzzwords and then something to get around to. That's a very real part of our operations in our world we live in right now. So I'd be planning to work on that as well. So these last items, they go pretty quick, comprehensive insurance coverage. I'll be looking at our insurance plan, making sure that we know exactly what we're getting. We've had, I've made some pretty good phone calls with CIAW, our insurance carrier. Questioning them on things and making sure we're getting the best deal we can. And I'll also be looking at what they provide for us and I've talked to the mayor a little bit about. It wouldn't hurt for us to talk to another insurance company a little bit. And just get free market to maybe help us with our premium cost a little bit. So we'll be looking at that. Other things internally, team building's a big one. Human resource development and leadership training. Most of the department heads, I think we're all signed up for leadership training. It'll probably be this fall because the classes are so packed. But this is to give everybody some tools on leading their departments. Bringing along new leaders as we talk about succession planning and staff development, that's item number B. And then a performance evaluation system. I think Mark might have mentioned that, somebody mentioned that, or maybe it was Lynn, when it was talking about the PD. I think our staff in fairness, we need to let them know how they're doing and. It's a good way for us to link city councils' goals and objectives down to our work plans. And then to our staff to make sure that they're. And then to our staff to make sure that they're linked into that as well, and it's a good opportunity to talk to them about goals. And to measure how we're doing on those objectives. Uh, right now, the city does not have a performance evaluation system in place that we intend to probably change that this next year. And then finally, strategic financial planning, there's capital facilities planning. And reserve planning and we'll just go into those kind of as we do our budget review here this summer, we'll talk more about those. So that's what I had, so um, I think uh, there's a lot of good things going on here, we'll continue to report back to council. On how we're proceeding on some of these things. And I think it'll get us to a good place, you've got a good team of department heads and staff working for you. And I'm really proud to be working with them and like I said, sometimes it's just best for me to get out of the way and let them do their job because they're really good at it. So I can answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Doug? Alright, nicely done. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Alright, so that um, it is eight eleven and that wraps it up for us tonight, lots of information. And uh, as Bill said, he will be posting um, the PowerPoints and the information, so you will be able to go. Um, to our council website and be able to get those or I'm assuming that's where you're going to place them, Bill, is on the council website.
That's correct.
All right, thank you. So um, looking forward to our retreat on Friday, um, from three to seven. I'm very glad that you can make it and I think that we're going to be able to get a lot of accomplished and uh, and do some good things as we look towards twenty twenty two. Okay, I hope you all have a good night and uh, we are adjourned. Night, everyone.